Ladies and gentlemen, could you please stand with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, swan nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Moskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Our next item is public comment period, one hour, two minutes, three minutes per individual or five minutes per group on non-public period matters. Something not dealing with this old farm, but I'm guessing you can correct tonight. If you would come forward, state your name and what district you're in.
Hello, my name is Chris Couch, I'm a member of District Five. I've come for you tonight to explain to you why I believe we have a reputation of a county that's not easy to do business with. I've provided examples of unfair assessments, attacks on my startup business. Two years ago, I set away from a career in business to focus on farm that I live in being laid. And we grow produce to feed our local food systems, right? I wanted to generate legitimate revenue for this county and attract tourism, right? As a result of that, I have been harassed, bullied, forced into a non-competitive, a competitive disadvantage against large grocery store retailers such as Walmart, Foodline, others operating both in our county and outside of our county. I believe that the path that we are heading down is a waste of tax paid dollars, because we are going to be fighting a battle in court that will take on positive guidelines established by the FDA, the USDA, and large grocery retailers of our community. This is a waste of our tax paid dollars. But first, I couldn't help but notice the agenda item about the accreditation, this is going to be awarded tonight to the Commissioner's Office. So I did some research, and there's two facts I'd like to bring up that I think are well into the discussion. First is, this is an award that was provided and given by a member that pays to be a member of that association, scratching the back of their members. And secondly, we talked about being one of the first in the Commonwealth to have been provided, well, it appears when I did a quick search that there are multiple counties that have provided this award. Happened to be, many of them were also up for reelection. So, instead of focusing on the accreditation, maybe we should focus on some real experiences that customers, that citizens have had. In 2017, I started the business that I call Farm Salad. I got a business license and proceeded down that path. Two years later, Sally Kirsten has gotten, has received every single email I have sent out on a weekly basis, and I have an analyst that shows how she's interacted with those through the years, through 2018. In 2019, she ordered a salad from me. Two weeks later, she tells me a meal tax is required on that salad. I told her, I said, "I don't think the Foodline charges a meal tax." She still told me definitively, "Yes, they do." I drove to Foodline, bought a salad, no meal tax. I was willing to sit down and collaborate, talk about how we can work through this. But instead, I was told four or five other reasons that were just unfounded and unjust. Let's pause for a second. I then went and started to look at my own personal tax assessments. I found six out of the last nine years they were in here, thirty-three percent. Any school system in our county, that is a failing grade, thirty-three percent out of the percent. In October, and I brought that up in September 26th, I worked through assessments and find that there were incorrectly charged on my farm. And two, a week later, on October 4th, they were paid twenty-five hundred dollars that were assessed to my small business that were erroneous. I took the weekend and I thought about that, and on October 7th, I believe as most of you know, I announced the candidacy, the writing candidacy for Commissioner of Revenue. Two days later, I was assessed fifteen hundred dollars in back taxes on the meals that I was, the meal tax on the salads that I had sold. And let's keep in mind, I have only sold less than twenty salads in this county, and if I were responsible for that meal tax, it would be less than ten dollars. I want to fast forward. Simply put, my meal does not qualify for the meal tax. The state and the county code-
Sorry, Mr. Carroll said two.
Well, alright, if I can bring somebody else up, am I too extra minutes? I will just finally close by saying that if we strive to be a county that's easier to do business with, maybe we'll find that generating tax revenue for businesses will help us offset the taxes for our county.
I'm as well, representing the head of the EPA, tonight, in fact, I'm in the Department of Public Safety. A quick, good news story, I participated in a telecom debate with the Middle Provincial Alliance regarding the Monkey Net project. The Monkey Indian Enterprise is a new company that's just stood up to take that on. They have two subsidiary companies, the Monkey Indian Enterprise Internet Services and the Monkey Indian Enterprise Professional Services. They currently contracted with a company we're familiar with, Design Nine, to look at the internet and develop business plans. This is not something that's going to happen next week or next year, so it's going to take a long-term project. I just wanted to give you an update on what we have with the Monkey Net. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Cheryl Ryan, I'm from the Magisterial District. We, in 2012, had signed up with the county with a agreement that we would land in open space land use. It was for six years. In 2015, the board changed it and made it effective until, starting 2016. So, after you all had approved this new change, shortly thereafter, I went to the Commissioner of Revenue's office and asked, you know, do you have any idea when this is going to happen, you know, do you have any idea how it's going to work? And was basically told that it hadn't been worked out yet. A year later or so, I went back in, and I noticed on my land card, it still said we had land use. So I walked into the Commissioner's office and I said, "Are we on land use or not?" And the response was, "Oh, no." So then, this year, after we paid off our house and we were getting bills, we, you know, realized that it was still on our land card. So we went into the Commissioner's office, and this time we asked Barbara Ford, "Are we on land use or not?" She says, "Matter of fact, you are." So, a couple of days later, we got, and we're not trying to get out of taxes, mind you, we realize we owe it, but, anyway, so a couple of days later, we get a phone call from Barbara saying, "Sally and I have been talking about this, and we figured it's a computer glitch." You know, it was not a computer glitch. And, so we wrote a letter to the Commissioner's office, and we had, in the meantime, gotten three supplemental bills for three years. And as soon as the letter came, we got a fourth bill, in which she returned the letter to, a letter to us, saying that it could be billed by law, which is true, but we're looking at it this way, due diligence, we tried to do what was right. Nothing was ever done. And now, on December 5th, we have a half a year's real estate tax, we have four years supplemental bills, to the tune of about sixteen hundred on those. And it would have been a lot easier had it been billed yearly. And I think that there's a question as to, what is dereliction of duty? What is, or who is accountable? I mean, is the Commissioner of Revenue accountable too? Because as far as I can tell, the only thing is the taxpayers, that there's no oversight. And I think that, you know, if we were one family, how many others were in that category? And how many others are in the same boat we are, that maybe don't even know it?
Anyone else?
My name's Nathan Williams, with the Second District. And just want to add on to the complaints that have already been brought up about Commissioner of Revenue, because this year, I was erroneously charged more money than I should have on my vehicle tax. And many others were, as well, who had 20th century vehicles from '99 and earlier. So, there's a problem here, and it seems to be recurring in a lot of other situations too, besides just what I've experienced. I didn't plan to come up and say anything tonight, but after hearing the problems that others have brought up, I felt like I needed to bring up my own experiences as well, and I'm not the only one who had their vehicles overcharged this year. Something that's known and has been addressed for me, but may not have been for other people. So, that's all I have to say.
Good evening, my name's Sybil Rose, and I'm in District- I'm used to tickers. Anyway, I'm in the Second District, I've been a King William resident for about fifteen years. I was also a resident of King and Queen for fifteen years, City of Richmond, I don't share that often, but, and also, I own property in Hanover, Chesterfield, and Palatane Counties. Some of those counties have land use, some don't. I'm in the land use program now, without it, you would not see forests on my property, you would see houses. And currently, I have four hundred and fifty acres of loblolly pine that I manage extensively with the Department of Forestry and USDA. When the changes came through, a few years ago, I came to the meeting, and I went up to the Commissioner's office later to find out the fees, because everything changed. And there were so many mistakes, year after year after year, in the office. It's, my property is complex, but I've been very frustrated with not only the mistakes, but the treatment I've had in the office, where an employee actually looked at me one day and said, "You know, farmers, they work really hard for their tax break, people like you in forestry do nothing." And I was so appalled, I was speechless. So I still do my forestry work, I would like to be treated better, and I would like people to regard the land use and for what it does for the county. But I've been very frustrated with when I do get overcharged, and I'm told that I cannot get my money back. And because of who I am, I have stood up and said, "I'm not leaving this office until this mistake is rectified." And I've actually given my name to people, they come in the office and I see how they're not treated with the respect I feel like they needed, to give them my name, to help them with the land use program, which is so complex now, that people are falling out. So I just want to bring this to the attention of the board, and hope people do appreciate people like me that try to keep the area rural, and the work I do with the Quail Habitat Program, and various other things with soil and water quality, as far as they're important. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be of approval if the consent agenda is presented.
Second.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Moskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Presentation, the first item that we have, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Matthew, are you coming up?
I'm Matthew Tight, I'm from King William. Maybe the light will come on while we're going along, but I'm going to try to be fairly quick with this, because I know you all have a busy meeting tonight. Here it comes. I'm going to be speaking tonight about domestic violence prosecution, the anatomy of it, and this is, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we got the very end. The first thing I want to emphasize, this is basically the outline of the, the main goal here is to break the goal, or break cycles of domestic violence prosecution, it's not to settle, just lock people up. That's the outline of the cycle of abuse, probably the most basic one, this would be the cycle that occurs within a relationship. Remember, these are relationships that involve families, structure, and loving relationships, but they also involve violence there, number two. And that cycle is going on in the background of almost every domestic violence prosecution. There are also generational, generational cycles of domestic violence. Probably the most striking statistics about that are that children exposed to domestic violence are three times more likely than children who aren't to repeat the cycle, and that's the number one predictor of whether or not someone will later in life be explicitly engaged in domestic violence, either as a victim or perpetrator, is whether or not they, as children, they witnessed it. Those are some examples of domestic violence crimes, that's a non-exclusively list, but those are the main ones that we tend to see, particularly family abuse, espousal abuse, impeachment partner abuse. So the first part of any domestic violence prosecution as a crime occurs, statistically, each year, there are approximately twelve million men and women who are victims of some form of domestic violence. Twelve million nationwide, one in four women, one in nine men over their lifetimes will experience severe domestic violence, physical violence. And in 2017, the last year, there are actually numbers for this, there were sixty-two thousand calls to Virginia Domestic and Sexual Violence Hotlines. So after a crime occurs, it's reported, it can be reported to law enforcement, nationwide, the number is fifty-six percent of those are reported. Frankly, to me, that seems a little high, but that translates roughly to about six million of twelve million people that experience it every year, reported to law enforcement. Seventy-one percent of folks in Virginia that sought domestic violence advocacy surfaces through one of our partners, such as Project Hope, had also reported it to law enforcement. The important factor, though, is to remember that these are things that happen many, many times in a relationship, and victims will leave their abusers an average of sixty-eight times before finally ending a relationship. So after a crime occurs, it's reported that law enforcement has then investigated, law enforcement, those who are seen, they meet up witnesses, the victim, they collect evidence, independent of what a victim says. The goal here, from our perspective, from a prosecutor's perspective, is to create a victimless prosecution, meaning they collect evidence that's not reliant on what a victim might say later. The goal there is to make a situation where we can prosecute a case with the victim not being out as the only piece of evidence out there on the ground, which is to support the victim as best as possible. During an investigation, law enforcement will try to make a determination about the predominant physical aggressor given the evidence, sometimes they're not able to do that, and they also may assess danger, either future or current, to the victim or her children. If they're able to make a determination about a predominant physical aggressor, law enforcement will arrest that person. If they can't, the citizen's free to go to the magistrate, which they often do. If they're arrested after a magistrate, they review the bond. Importantly, an emergency protective order is automatically issued by statute, meaning that that person, that perpetrator may be barred from any contact with the victim or the family for at least seventy-two hours or until the next court date. In King William, that can mean sometimes a couple of weeks before the next court date. And then the victim can later petition for additional protective orders. It's very important at this stage to freeze the cycle, and that's what a protective order does. The next step in prosecution, if I'm going too fast, if you have any questions, just let me know. The next step in prosecution is the arraignment of defendants who are brought before court, and this is where our office begins to become more involved, particularly when you're talking about bond or conditions of bond. We review all cases before they go to arraignment to see if there are additional bond conditions, but again, with the goal of stalling that cycle of domestic violence while we prosecute a case and figure out what's going on. And those conditions can include no contact with the victim independent of a protective order. The next step in prosecution is victim witness outreach. This is intended to provide support to victims early in a case. Cases go much better if there is immediate contact from our office with the victim witness director, because the victims are aware of what we can do, what we can't do, when we go over those things. We work very hard to ensure their safety, and assist them in every scanning process, and what, and like I said, this is key to an effective prosecution of early victim intervention. The next step is prepare for trial, and probably the most important thing on this slide is, when we're preparing for trial, we try to consider the impacts on the victim and any children involved, but positive and negative. Remember, these are situations where folks have a loving relationship, it could be financial consequences to the prosecution for the victim, and the next thing, and that all leads us to setting a goal for each case. What are we trying to accomplish? And we may make a plea offer to achieve that particular goal. After the preparation, it's going to be trial, plead guilty, trial, common will have the burden of proof beyond a reasonable doubt, and it's trial just like it looks like on TV, a little much less interesting sometimes. And then the other part is, if they plead guilty, there's no trial. An outcome is based on a plea, if there's agreement, or if there's not an agreement, the outcome is based on what the judge might order. One of the outcome options, outcome options that we have is, if we go to trial, the defendant's found not guilty, that's it. If there's evidence sufficient to find the person guilty, meaning there's not our burden, but the judge doesn't find the person guilty, initially, they can go to what's called a first offender program, or they can plead guilty, either responsibly or as the charges presented, and that can go either as a first offender or with some form of other punishment. First again, offender is available for cases only when it is a true first offense, in other words, when we view someone's criminal history, they don't have another assault and battery, domestic on their criminal history, that mean that they are more than a first offender program. It entails two years of probation, there are various programs that all of them require either anger management or a battery intervention, you know, longer, more detailed course. And they have to be a decent behaviorer than any offender. And if they're successful, the case will be dismissed, and it will show on their record that it's dismissed. If it's not successful, they'll be brought back to court, court defines the guilty, and imposes a sentence. One of the, we'll go back a little bit, one of the reasons that we often make plea offers is to avoid appeals, in other words, trying a case twice. The defendant in juvenile domestic violence court has a denouement or a mandatory trial right of statute for them to go to a certain, or to a new trial. And that can sometimes weigh heavily on victims, they don't want to go through something twice. They often helps inform our decisions on whether or not to make a plea offer. And if that does happen, they go to a certain court. They also, if they're found guilty in a certain court, they have the right to appeal, to the court appeals, or the Supreme Court again. And then after court, protective orders may be entered, in some cases, they must be entered, some cases are one type of case where they must be entered. Victims and their family can receive counseling, our victim witness director is involved in helping set that up, as is our partner, Project Hope. And then depending on the disposition of cases, it's hopefully rebuilding, hopefully that we've broken the boundaries of the law. We've got a hundred and ten minutes, are there any questions?
Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
How many in our county, I understand the program for the month, but let's highlight our county a little bit.
Okay.
Over the last year, two questions for you, over the last year, how many offenses that would fall into this domestic violence has your office handled? And the second part of that question is, how many of these are repeat offenders?
So I can't really answer for you, the repeat offenders, because we don't track that as a repeat offender. I can tell you that when we get a case in, what we do is review their criminal history, because they could have offended a Hanover County, for example, we need to know that information, and we charge them as repeat offenders. So, if someone is charged as a, if they have two prior domestic assaults on their record, they're charged with a felony, which is a third offense. So far as how many cases we've handled, I haven't piled all of them for the year, I can tell you that we are, what I do right now is, during the year, I track court appearances. Our office has made a total, as of the end of September, of approximately five hundred court appearances in all cases, and in cases related to the B-Stock Grant, which is the grant that is exclusively for violence against women, we've made approximately seventy court appearances, and that's over all cases of those, so.
Matt, domestic violence awareness being the theme here, we've got a good audience here, a good opportunity to maybe talk to people about things that they can do if they are, you know, aware of situations that need attention, or somebody that needs help, what are some resources out there that these people can reach out to, yeah?
So, the number one thing that I would want people to realize is that it is there at all times, and it happens in all households, it doesn't discriminate by race, by socioeconomic status, by class, by anything. And people need to recognize it is present, and if they encounter that, you know, the first thing I would say is, when you encounter a personal victim with domestic violence, put your judging hat aside. Domestic violence victims hear often, "Well, why didn't you just read?" And it's a lot more complicated than that, and for the reasons I kind of touched on, you have, you have financial concerns, you have who's going to take the kids to school, who's going to take care of the kids, you have emotional attachments, regardless of whether or not someone is abusive to somebody, there's a lot of emotion involved, there is definitely care. So being supportive of victims and not judging them, and trying to understand the shoes that they're in, are probably the two most important things, I would say. And then finally, if you are aware of domestic violence, contact Project Hope, contact our office, contact the Sheriff's Office. Just because you report, and I do report, report your knowledge of somebody being in domestic violence does not necessarily mean that they're going to go out and get right or arrested, by the way. But, it does mean that we can hopefully reach out to that particular family or victim and try to get them some help, because that's really what we're trying to do here, is stop the violence, break the cycle, and get folks that are in the middle of help, both offenders and victims.
Quinn Rivers and Department of Social Services could be another resource also that would be available to folks, correct?
So Quinn Rivers is Project Hope-
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're the same, basically, they've changed the name, but it's Project Hope. And they are an excellent resource for us, but, you know, they're limited in what they can do. Department of Social Services really is only involved in cases that involve children as victims of their parents. It's a very narrow scope, they can provide some forms of assistance through their other programs, such as heating and fuel oil and things like that, but that's, that might help somebody get their feet on the ground. I think occasionally DSS has the ability to place somebody in a safe house, I do want to plug Bridges of Change, has their shelter open now, they have- They have, I believe, ten beds available, although I don't know, I'm sure many of those are taken right now. But they are the only domestic violence shelter that is exclusively for King William, King Queen, and you can't trust it.
And elder abuse is also one that people don't necessarily think of, but is happening.
Yes, yes. Elder abuse is domestic violence as well, and that is probably one of the more underreported things in our community. And a lot of people, I think sometimes view elder abuse through the light of, well, why would they do that to their parent? Why would they do that to their grandparent? And it's even harder to overcome the preconceived notions, I think, in elder abuse cases. So yes, because when we do have them, they're pretty tense.
And I think you agree that they're used to think, well, many times years before the law enforcement is even involved.
Yes, so one of the questions that law enforcement will ask, or that we certainly ask, is how long has this been going on? And is it a checklist of things? Because we try to assess how and how much danger somebody is in, because oftentimes, by the time it gets to law enforcement, it's escalating to a point where the victim feels that they are truly in danger. Many people call the sheriff's office because they are fearful for their safety, and then once they are safe again, they, they, they waffle a little bit because of all the accompanying factors involved. So, but safety is something that, you know, many people feel like they manage this, and they're off the line.
Just a few more statements from Mr. Johnson, what are you ready to give your court today?
No, all episodes. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to present this evening. Complimenting tonight is Mrs. Stacey Longus, she's our new finance board member. Before I begin, however, I'd like to share some good news about King William County Public Schools. As your mayor, Brandon, in the Richmond Times-Stat a few weeks ago, based upon the VDOE School quality profile, in addition to being fully accredited, our on-time graduation rate is up by four percentage points from ninety-four to ninety-four point eight. And our dropout rate is down by three percentage points from five to nine-nine to two-point-eight-nine, the lowest in five years. So I wanted to make you aware of that, of the successes. Now regarding the FY19 year in the fund balance moving to school capital funds, King William County Public Schools finished the year prior to the annual audit review, tracking a surplus of eighty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars. In spite of school not receiving a hundred and six thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars in appropriate revenue from the calendar due to the shortfall of collections in varied categories, including bank stock, wheels tax, and communication sales tax. In October 2019, the school provided, the school, the county provided the school division the reconciliation for a split levy that would allow for an additional six hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-five cents, which has been restricted to the school's portion of the replacement of the financial system, the annual support of the financial system, repeaters in the school buildings, and the local radio replacement. In past years, King William County Public Schools deferred replacement of aging bus fleets, which we are now trying to address with nine buses purchased over the past three years out of a fleet of forty-seven. However, last week's VDOE audit of King William County Public Schools recommended buses be less than fifteen years old, and you have an attachment in the field that shows that as of March 2019, fifty-one percent of our fleets are more than fifteen years old.
Is that a recommendation, or is that based on a statutory request?
That is a recommendation. Actually, they recommend ten years, we are at fifteen years for half of them. Upgrades to technology equipment not included in the one-to-one initiatives such as classroom computers for teachers, smart boards and projectors, and preventive maintenance of buildings that are not included in the scope of the four-point-nine million dollar ABM service contract agreement, which was again at no expense to the county taxpayers. Within the past two years since, excuse me, two months with the opening of the school, following challenges have arisen. Seven buses have overheated and were broken down and in need of repairs. Four classroom projectors beyond useful life have broken. HVAC units continue to falter, which is again not a part of the ABM initiative, those have been taken care of. Pavement cracks in Cool Springs private, excuse, Cool Springs Primary School, Aquin Elementary School, and King William High School need to be addressed. Intercom systems that are not working effectively at Cool Springs Primary School and Aquin Elementary School, and repairs to the bus garage. Therefore, any funds that we are able to be carried over to our capital fund will be of great use to ensure that our buildings are maintained, technology is kept current, and provide continued replacement of aged buses within our fleet.
Given of your budget, don't you, the budget we approved for you last year, doesn't that allow you to shift funds between categories to cover some of these expenses? You, you didn't anticipate any of these expenses?
We were not given the funding for capital.
Pardon me?
We were not given funding for capital, and we don't use operating funds for capital.
You received no funding at all for capital? What is, you said that you were cut several areas, your revenues weren't what they expected.
Well, the county had a shortfall in three tax areas, and we didn't receive the funding for that, so we were short a hundred and six thousand dollars.
Okay, but in the meantime, the B-Pole tax, whatever, that's a hundred and forty thousand dollars that was unexpected so far, correct?
We only received what was appropriate.
That's for next year?
We only received what was appropriate.
We did not appropriate it, we didn't know what we were getting at.
Okay. Let me ask a question, if I may. I have your, the document talks about cohort, what? It says engagement and completion results. What's the number of students in a cohort, what's a cohort?
Cohort is the number of students in the graduating class.
So in that class of 2019, there's a hundred and seventy-three who are going to be dropping, graduating, or is that last year's?
That was last year that graduated from nineteen.
Thank you.
Just one, the, the, the information here, current year FY19, this is consistent with what the purpose of the caboose bill, right? Caboose at the end of the end of the general assembly?
So that is our actual, I think that you're looking up, is our actual, it's finished as of the end of the school year, June 30th, with our tools that were based in jail.
Okay, so, but is this not consistent with the end of year appropriation that the general assembly does also? Mr. Nickley used to refer to it as a caboose bill, when the funds were reconciled.
For the audit?
Right.
Yeah, we're still waiting our final audit.
Our auditors just left on Friday, and we're still working on last thing that they provide us.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I think that the caboose bill was a very specific piece of legislation where they appropriated some additional money a couple of years ago. It's not an annual, it's not an annual.
And this report is really just based on the resolution that was passed last year for our ABM spend funds to be moved over into our school capital fund, so this is just really an updated report.
You said that your auditors just left last week, did you give you any kind of indication of what the results your auditor are going to be?
No, sir.
Do you have an idea when we can, when you'll be able to come back and tell us what the results of that audit are?
We're still working on providing them test work on some items that are outstanding, and then we hope to have a report in the next month or two. Not real sure from previous times what time they wrapped up the audit in the past.
Mr. Hanson, the audit that she's talking about is on capital, our community financial report, and that will be brought to the board in December.
Thank you. So if you're looking for some, some insight from the board, I mean, if you have available money remaining, personally, I think, you know, the, the issue with the school buses is pretty alarming to me, and I would hope that we can get, you know, use some money to alleviate that safety concern and.
And this is really when we have to downturn the economy, and our budgets were not what they should have been, that's why we weren't able to get new buses. So in the past three years, we've been able to start addressing it, but we're still below what we need right now. We're continuing to try to get our fleet as replenished as possible.
The three buses we purchased in July, or we made commitment to in July will not be here till November, so it takes, there's quite a lead time for buses.
Will that be here till when?
Not till November.
November. A week.
And a few, yeah, with, it's more of a holiday. And that was three that were purchased.
How many did you order?
Three.
One special and two regulars.
Thank you.
I'm not really into this, but just to catch the public up, there was news of a recall that affected some of the buses that we had in the fleet.
Yes, we have three buses that are possibly, they're not likely, but possibly could be called in that. And what it is, it's a phone underneath the seat where your, the kid's knees may hit, it's called shin guard or shin pad, it may have adjusted, and they're already on it. It's voluntary recall, they notify the proper authorities, and so if we're waiting in December, they will give us the VIN numbers for any buses that we may have that need to be addressed. But it's not a necessarily safety concern, but it is a, it is some issues with the phone that needs to be addressed.
How many, given the numbers that you have, given the number of buses that you're expecting, how many buses do you think, do you anticipate that you will need that are not in funding, that you're going to be receiving, or that you can't fund for the rest of the year? How many are you short for this year?
You mean, how many buses are over fifteen?
How many buses do you want for the rest of the year?
We want them all. So we are taking incremental purchases to make sure that we replenish it, so we do three at a time, that's what we can afford based on the budget here.
So you don't want twenty-one buses right now, and you're doing it incrementally?
That would be unrealistic. I mean, if you give us that, I'll take it, but that's unrealistic.
All right. And if you didn't have twenty-one?
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
All right, my next item is Commissioner of Revenue Office accreditation, Sally Pearson. Commissioner Sally Pearson has recently been honored at the 100th Annual Conference of the Commission of Revenue Association by being one of the first localities in the Commonwealth to issue an office accreditation. Accreditation is awarded only to offices which have met the standards set forth by the Commission and Association. As per our own standards set forth by the Association, it includes education requirements for Commissioner and staff, testing service, personnel, and ethics policies, and well as assessment of each office receiving accreditation and under strong, hard, and true compliance and going to be required to annually demonstrate their continued leading of these standards. Commissioner Sally Pearson has demonstrated a commitment on King William County and to the good governance. This is an honor that we have earned through hard work and, which it signifies that King William County Revenue Office has met the highest standards of professionalism as set forth by the Commission of Revenue Society here, Sally.
They work tirelessly to serve the citizens of King William County and provide excellent service. They are often the first employees to arrive at the courthouse and the last ones to leave. They rarely get a lunch break away from their desk and schedule their vacations around the peak times of the office, which are pretty much constant these days. They are dedicated to the citizens they serve and are professional to the core. The Commissioner of Revenue Office is responsible for assessing and administering over twenty-one billion taxes annually, as well as administering tax relief programs, such as the elderly and disabled tax relief program, the disabled veterans, real estate relief, and land use program. The Commissioner of Revenue's Office also assists the Department of Taxation in processing state income tax returns. All of this work takes place under an annual budget of less than three hundred thousand. We are proud of our work and the Commissioner of the Revenue Office, and look forward to serving you in the future. Thank you.
It's just questions that the audience had asked me to raise in terms of this certificate. So will the, there's reference to an audit that we've done, will that audit be available to citizens?
Yes.
Okay. In this conference, I think we know, but this conference is attended on staff time, right? Not on personal time?
That's correct.
So the taxpayers pay for attendance at this conference?
I was the only one who attended the conference.
Right, right. But you were, you attended?
Yes.
The taxpayers paid through, through the budget? So that was two questions that might have asked, right? You get clarification on.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, before I start the next item, and leave me with the whole, don't throw nothing yet. However, there are some issues that counsel has told us with notification. We're going to have to send it back to the planning permission for their making this, because the notifications were not accurate. And to all the adjacent, we are going to have a presentation, and we are definitely, with this turnout, we're going to have a public comment here. And I will be taking notes, and it will be recorded. We will consider what you tell us tonight and anything further. There will be another public hearing in, hopefully in a year.
We clearly understand the board's not going to do anything until after the election. There's just no time, surprise.
We can't hear. We, a lot of us cannot hear back here at all. Yeah.
All right, your next item again is, I'm going to have the public here and add a presentation with sweet, sweet solar farms on additional heat and bronze eder, where the community develop and have a presentation.
Good evening. This is a request for a condition of use permanent. Check. This request is for a condition of use permanent zero-three-dash-nineteen for the installation of a seventy-seven megawatt solar photovoltaic generation facility. It encompasses tax back parcels, twenty-eleven, twenty-twenty.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah?
Didn't we just say we're going to send this back to the panel commission?
We are, but we're going to go ahead with the presentation, with the turnout that we have here, and we're going to go there.
Thank you.
The proposed project consists of approximately one thousand, two hundred and sixty-two acres of land. The expected fence area of the project will encompass approximately five hundred and seventy-six acres of land. Twenty-seven parcels are zoned agricolt. 27 parcels are zoned agricultural conservation and consists mainly farmland, houses, structures. 14 adjacent parcels are zoned residential, and two parcels are zoned residential rural. They consist mainly of single-family residential properties. The future land use map in the 2016 comprehensive plan indicates rural land use for the property, and the property is located in the Mainland Fourth Lady District. The existing uses, agriculture and residential, included in your packet was the application, the public hearing notices, the correspondence, meeting meetings, public input, and period background materials for that. We did provide the Board of Supervisors with the application package and the conceptual site plans on October 7, 2019. Public notice was given at two community meetings for adjacent property owners as we run the title of reviews. Public comments, concerns, and questions were solicited to the community meetings held by the VNG and the Planning Commission Public Hearing on October 1, 2019. Comments that they received by email, phone calls, and in-person conversations. Some of the comments were included as attachment eight in your packet. Staff did review the conditional use permit, and on September 28, 2015, the Board of Supervisors adopted a zoning ordinance text amendment which permits solar power stations by conditional use permit in the Agricultural Conservation District. The ordinance included application requirements, public notice procedures, and minimum development standards. The designation of a use as a conditional use in the zoning district means that use may not be appropriate in all cases depending on whether cup conditions can be met. The application requirements included in the ordinance include that the location is appropriate, the public health, safety, morals, general welfare will not be adversely affected. The application appears to address these potential impacts on the public. And the necessary safeguards will be provided for the protection of surrounding property, persons, and neighborhood values. The conceptual layout depicts the location of solar panels in relation to adjacent property. The solar project does appear to meet the site plan requirements. There were 12 conditions that came out of the planning commission hearings. I've been reading through all of them, unless you all need me to. It was included in your packet. There were a total of 12 conditions placed by the planning commission on the conditional use permit application. At a regular meeting on October 1, 2019, the planning commission voted four to one that the board approved the conditional use permit with the conditions as proposed. Assuming no additional comments or information is received, requiring significant modifications to the conditions, staff recommends supporting such the planning commission recommendations. But as Mr. Hodges pointed out earlier, the situation has changed, so the recommendation will be that. Representatives from the VNG are here tonight. I think Mr. Eddie Berry is here. They are prepared to present to the board the proposal for the head county satisfaction application.
Can't hear you. So you're open to questions now?
Yeah, they were going to present, give you the overview of those.
But you've already told us the report's defective. Is there any corrections you want to make on your report before we hear what they have to say?
Oh, as far as my recommendations, yeah?
You said your report was defective. You said notifications went out as appropriate. We know they didn't.
No. The community development department failed to notify an adjacent property owner. We missed the property. We did not realize it was adjacent.
The community development department?
Me, not staff.
You?
Yes.
Okay. Before they get up and do their presentation, because you said you're going to, you stand on what your earlier presentation was. What's, has there been a change in the buffer zone? I've heard that it's gone from 600 feet to 300 feet.
The, there's been no revisions to the conceptual site plan, so whatever the initial site plan, there's been no change to the buffer.
You know.
There's nothing built yet, but I don't have, the buffer zone's a conceptual, the conceptual site plan just shows what it has.
Also, the buffer zone of 600 feet is conceptual. It's not, they're not being held to that.
They're not being, that's their minimum, yes. The conceptual plan is their.
Conceptual.
Right. They can't, when the site plans come in, the destruction drawings, they can reduce, but they can't increase.
Well, we've had a chance tonight to listen to some conversations and discussions about one of our other departments. How did your office miss this important issue? And you see a room of almost 400 people here. Explain to them how you missed this important issue.
Can y'all hear me better? One of the requirements for a conditional use permit application is that all adjacent abutting property owners get notified of the public hearings. We made every attempt looking at GIS and lists of people that were adjacent to the property. There were two properties with the same last name as the donor. The one we looked at wasn't adjacent. Then we discovered that a small portion of another property with the same last name was actually adjacent to the property, and they were not notified. We failed to catch that property, and that's why we have to re-hear this.
I'm on the planning commission. This is a slight oversight, and it is legal, but I would like to, if people want to read it, I'd like to read it, because people need to know, just if it came up.
Mr. Chairman, folks in the back, can you hear? Are you?
No.
You can't.
You're both good.
permit application. If approved, the following conditions should be attached to the approval for this specific project. All required reviews and approvals must be attained in accordance with the county zoning and subdivision ordinance and all other pertinent county requirements, including but not limited to state agency review and approvals and variance requests. Development agreements, bonding, letter of credit requirements shall be met for all site improvements shown on the plans prior to issuance of a zoning and building permits. Traffic management. The applicant shall comply with all Virginia Department of Transportation recommendations for traffic management during construction and decommissioning of the site. The roads will need to be maintained in good condition during the construction phase and be brought back to the original condition or improved upon completion of the project in decommissioning phase. Conceptual plan. The property shall be developed in substantial conformity with the conceptual plan as amended and as modified by these conditions. Expiration. This cup shall permit a solar power station for which a valid and current building permit is issued within two years of conditional use permit approval. For any construction which does not have a valid and current building permit at the end of the two-year conditional use permit approval, the applicant may seek an extension of any remaining construction from the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator shall consider the compliance history of these conditions and the code of King William County and the capacity of his existing facilities to service the remaining construction if the decision to grant the request. If the zoning administrator does not grant the extension, the request shall be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors for consideration and action following a public hearing advertised as required by State Code 15-2204. The applicant shall be required to provide and maintain a vegetated buffer between the project parcels and all adjacent properties. All vegetation should remain healthy or be replaced at applicant's expense if vegetation becomes diseased, damaged, or dead. Development shall proceed as submitted in the site plan dated and included as part of this cup application. The applicant shall be required to perform such studies as necessary to determine if the runoff from the array of solar panels is significantly greater than the runoff from the farm crops and, if so determined, to develop mitigation plans satisfactory to the Board of Supervisors to limit such additional runoff to the project area before entering the wetlands and streams. The applicant shall be required to consult with the Department of Conservation and Recreation's Division of Dam Safety and Flood Plane Management to conduct inspection and evaluation of these dams to determine and ensure their future safety, and shall make whatever repairs and or renovations as deemed to be appropriate by the Dam Safety Division prior to the issuance of final permits for construction of the solar farm. The landscape buffer required for screening under Section 86-456 of the state code, of King William County code, shall be increased from four feet to 12 feet wide to provide sufficient screening. The construction hours are restricted from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. Can you hear me?
I don't need to see the light. No, you won't need that. Perfect, thank you.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. Let's find that table and vote. I'm Eddie Berry. I'm the development manager in charge of the Sweet Sue Solar Project. Is it up? No worries. Can everyone hear me? Okay. Take this as a yes?
So far.
Okay. Give you a brief project introduction. Sweet Sue Solar is a solar generation facility located in Alit with an expected annual footprint of 576 acres. We're applying for the permit on behalf of private landowners David Chenault and T. Frank Filippo and Sons. And of course, the action requested is approval of the conditional use permit. As Ron's overview indicated, the zoning ordinance pertaining to solar power stations was adopted September of 2015 by the board. Solar power stations are a conditional use permitted in the Agricultural Conservation zoning district. The project, as demonstrated by the application materials, is compliant with said ordinance and is also in harmony with the 2016 comprehensive plan adopted by this very same board. As Ron also mentioned, at the beginning of the month, the planning commission recommended approval with a four to one vote. Little bit of background on VNG. We are the largest privately-held renewable energy developer in North America. This is representative of our portfolio, the homes we power, the people we employ, the investment we make in local economies. We've developed, as you can see, quite a large portfolio of wind, solar storage, and natural gas projects. I apologize, I'm accelerating this a bit because I was told right before the meeting I have to give a condensed version, so I'm speaking through a little bit faster than anticipated. But please feel free to stop and ask any questions. Quick, maybe slightly more in-depth project overview. Again, it's a 77-megawatt generation facility. Will power the equivalent of 16,000 homes. Current timeline anticipates construction beginning at the end of 2020, and the project coming online delivering power at the end of 2021.
But none of that power is for King William, correct?
That's, it's not determined where the power will actually be consumed. It gets injected into the grid and then distributed by PJF.
It's not determined, thank you.
So the panels we intend to use for this project are certified safe. They'll use single-axis tractors that follow the path of the sun. Anticipated to have a 30-plus-year lifespan. Again, out of the 1,262 acres within the scope of the permit application, we anticipate installing panels on 576 acres, all to be fenced in. Again, two private landowners have leased their property for this purpose, covering eight parcels of land. The land is currently rural agricultural and timberland with an abundant solar resource, and the project has a low visual profile with minimum road frontage and a lot of existing vegetated screening, which will be supplemented and improved in accordance with the conditions imposed by the planning commission and board and the requirements of the ordinance.
We just had a question a little few minutes ago, about 600 to 300 feet. What is your commitment as the attorney for this company?
I would first apologize.
600 or 300 feet?
I'm not an attorney for this company. I'm a development manager.
Okay, what's your 300 or 600?
Sure. You're asking me with reference.
They said that I could ask questions, Mr. Chairman.
And you did, and you won't let him answer.
I'm going to answer.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Of course. What's your recommendation, 600 or 300 feet as far as the other lands?
Well, the current preliminary site plan that we've submitted shows a, that the nearest residence is between 600 and 700 feet from where we're installing solar panels.
Residence, not property line, correct?
Correct.
Thank you for the clarification.
So as the application demonstrated, as well as the approval from the planning commission, we complied in the design of the facility with all of the relevant sections of the solar power station ordinance. Our site plan, again, is compliant with the relevant preliminary site plan ordinance. And I would advise and note that before the construction or land disturbance would occur for the project, we still have to receive approval of a final site plan, which will show the finally, final engineered facility and layout. And, you know, will also be a prerequisite to obtaining any land disturbance and building permits, in addition to state approvals and permits that will also be required.
Certification. Didn't you just say tonight we were scheduled until we found out there was a mistake in our own planning department? Didn't tonight we're going to take a vote on this? And you're telling us tonight you didn't even have final plans for this?
The process works that to obtain the conditional use permit, you submit a preliminary site plan. That's what's required for approval. Once you have approval for this conditional use, then you proceed with state permitting, you proceed with advanced engineering of the site, you proceed with stormwater management approvals, erosion and sediment control plan approvals, final site plan approvals, building permit approvals at both the county and state level. So there's a gauntlet of approvals that follow the conditional use permit approval. It's, the requirement of the ordinance is you submit a preliminary site plan, and there's an extensive list of requirements that you must include in that site plan to be in compliance.
Just for your information, in case you were wondering, the reason I'm concerned about this is that I'm the one whose district this thing is going into. These are the people whose homes you're building next to, not the rest of this board. So that's why I'm concerned about it. They may have a individual concern about the greater King William County. I'm concerned about the score district and the people that are here tonight. That's why I'm asking questions.
Okay.
Please go forward, sir.
So in the interest of time, I'm going to skip.
Oh, wait a minute. No, don't do the interest of time. There's people out here that want to hear your presentation. Apparently, there's several.
I was asked to keep the presentation to 15 minutes or less, sir, and so I'm condensing the presentation.
Mr. Hanson, hold on.
You wanted to conserve time.
We're sending back the planning commission, sir. That's why we felt, asked them that they would reduce their presentation. And you allow the folks in the audience to speak.
So we don't want anybody out here to hear the rest of this presentation?
Look, I was. Nothing being hidden.
I can assure you that.
Isn't that sharp, Mr. Chairman?
He is. All right, go ahead with what you were going to do, Mr. Hanson, you're out of order.
Yes, and the people. Yes, and the people.
So again, we're here tonight representing local landowners, some of whom reside in your district, Mr. Hanson. We're seeking authorization by the Board to use the property for a solar power station. Again, approval does not give us the ability to engage in any land disturbances without further Board approval, the final site plan, and the issuance of the necessary building permits in addition to the universe of reviews and approvals required at the state level. The guidance and standards under Section 86452 of the conditional use permit, conditional use ordinance in King William County that precedes the ordinance permitting solar power stations in agricultural conservation zoning district states that the conditional use should only be approved if it's permitted as a conditional use in district regulations. The table provided in Section 86171 of the county zoning ordinances establishes a use placement and operation of solar power station in the agricultural conservation zoning district as a permitted use. In addition to that, the relevant section of the ordinance provides guidance and standards for determining if a conditional use is appropriate, one of which is that the use be placed in an appropriate location. Again, agriculturally zoned, agriculturally zoned land is predetermined by the ordinance to be in appropriate location. This particular project has an appropriate location in that it's naturally screened from view by existing vegetation. It has minimal road frontage. In addition to that, we're accepting and willing to comply with the Planning Commission condition to increase the vegetated buffers for the project from four feet to 12 feet, 300% increase from what's stated in the current ordinance. Again, the location is appropriate because no arrays will be located closer than 680 feet from the nearest residence, as depicted in the preliminary site plan. All arrays but one are located 2,000 feet or more from infield and manfield roads. And again, our setbacks from property lines and residences exceed county requirements as stated under the ordinance. And lastly, the location is appropriate because we're using primarily previously disturbed agricultural lands and buffering the facility a minimum of 100 feet from all wetlands and resource protection areas.
A question. On your point number three, no adverse impacts. Now, folks, I don't know everybody in the fourth district. What are you talking about, no adverse impacts on public health, safety, or morals? Are any, what's the impact upon the morals of people in the fourth district?
This is taken from the ordinance, which essentially for a conditional use to be permitted, you have to demonstrate that there's no adverse impact on public health, safety, morals, or general welfare. In this instance, there is no adverse impact on morals.
No.
Right.
Okay. So we can expect, as you're presenting tonight, that if there's any questions in the future, that the first resources you're going, well, one of the first resources you're going to go to is a statute. That's the language here you're using is from statute. Is that correct?
County code.
County code.
That guy is on the work.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
So the second requirement under the relevant ordinance is that the conditional use be in harmony or not in conflict with the comprehensive plan of the county. As the score is aware, following the implementation of the solar power station ordinance in 2015 and the issuance of the first conditional use permit by the county for the Hollyfield One facility, the current comprehensive plan was adopted by this very Board in November of 2016. That was followed by the second issuance of a conditional use permit for the Hollyfield Two solar facility in 2017. I would point out that there are no discernible differences between this use and the use permitted for the Hollyfield projects, other than our client having lost road frontage and being substantially better screening and setback.
The situation, other than having no road frontage, how are you going to get back there? Using helicopters or birds? How do you get back if you don't have?
Well, access, rather than talking about road frontage on public roadways. The facility is located, a very small portion of the facility is located in close proximity to infield road.
But you don't have the owner's permission to cross his property yet?
No, we do have permission under our lease to access the properties from infield road.
So it's not what you told me, but please continue.
The perimeter of the project along infield road is very minimal. That's really the sole point I was trying to make there, is that, you know, that this project does not track alongside of a public roadway any great distance.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. I would also note in discussing the comprehensive plan that the community facilities section of the comprehensive plan specifically mentions the expansion of Dominion's sustainable energy portfolio and that it will likely lead to expansion in solar farms in rural areas, showing that the comprehensive plan contemplates this exact type of development. So we talked about appropriate location. Again, the Planning Commission has opposed a couple of conditions here that help to protect visual screening and view shed adjoining properties and residences. Again, setbacks, our minimum setbacks are outlined in the table referenced in this slide. But our preliminary site plan demonstrates that setbacks are, when actually applied, are far greater. Again, 680 feet from the nearest residential dwelling or structure, 300 feet from infield road, and 2,500 feet from manfield road. Those setbacks all apply to panel locations or array of locations.
I'm not making suggestions to anybody, but what would you do if somebody puts a structure on their property closer than that, what you've gotten out to a residence? It says dwelling. So if they put some kind of yard tractor structure or something like that, are you going to change your, to your, your, back from that structure?
That would depend on when the structure was built in relation to, when that structure was built in relation to whether we had a permit issued at that time, whether the facility was built at that time.
So if someone builds one tonight or tomorrow, they're scared to worry because they haven't yet gotten, only have the permit yet?
I would say that's accurate. We would have to comply with setbacks, with relevant setbacks.
I'm not suggesting any of that.
And adjustments would be made to the final site plan approval, to the final site plan, to obtain approval. So talking about harmony of the comprehensive plan again, you know, three long-term goals and objectives outlined in the plan are met by the facility. Promotes the development of diversified commercial taxes. It provides for orderly and timed development of land consistent with the county's ability to provide services in that no additional services are required. It balances the protection of natural resources to maintain environmental health and quality by utilizing the same for economic development, a point which I will elaborate on further in the presentation. The plan also outlines the number of workforce and economy goals and objectives that are met by the project and by approval of the conditional use permit.
What is your goal for local hiring?
What is that goal for local hiring?
Local hiring and sourcing. What's your goal for local hiring?
My goal is to use best efforts that are compliant with any contracts that apply to the contract to hire local laborers and source materials locally, whether that's in King William County to the extent available or in the Commonwealth to the extent available. So these goals and objectives include local hiring and sourcing, expansion and diversification of the economic base. In that name, it's estimated that 1.8 million in new tax revenue will be generated in the first 10 years of the operation of the facility. That includes machinery and tool stacks and increased real estate taxes resulting from the removal of land for land use.
Did you say 1. something billion, like bean billion?
No, sorry, I said 1.8.
Mr. Hanson, we've interrupted this man. Every sentence he has spoken has not answered one question. With the theater and let the man finish his presentation so we can hear from the public.
Mr. Hanson, that's enough.
No, you cannot rule me out. Why? He said, "I have a question."
The meeting is at 3:00.
There we go, folks.
We're in recess, sir.
Okay.
Your government's bad.
We saw the tour.
He went to meet.
He went to meet.
He knows you.
He knows.
The majority of these folks.
But again, I think it's all right.
They have.
They have.
I'm playing it.
We got it, mate.
We are lovers.
Well, he's selling my house.
I think it's his personal brain.
Building, spending every year.
Mike.
What's the word?
I mean, I'm.
That was the kind of.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They put the sign up and said, "Oh, we can do this."
I mean, I'm.
That was the kind of.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They put the sign up and said, "Oh, we can do this."
What I was told, like you got it, a ton of water in there.
They're only one foot.
It's a good group.
It had to be.
We tell them that they got it.
He's doing it, too.
I'm trying to jump it on.
I'm trying to jump it on.
You know, I started liking it.
That's why I'm saying.
He's going to be a dancer here in the last week.
You're laughing.
We laughed every night.
You're just, you're trying to win your audience.
There's like five and eights.
For the last three additions.
You know, I don't know.
You were steeping up.
So it's not sharing. I know it's not.
It's not.
It's good.
If we do return to our seats, we're going to try to resume this presentation.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
He holds himself back to you.
He only let himself go.
Yes.
Yes.
We're going to try to talk.
We're running.
We're done without questions.
You can ask them at the end of, we do want to finish this sometime, 28.
Counsel advised me I had that authority.
The whole question.
The man can't even finish your presentation.
So you don't even know what he's going to say, and you're over here jumping up and
down.
Please wait and you can have it.
I have, I have some questions.
I'm just asking questions, but in consideration for the esteemed chair, I will.
That'd be good work.
Yeah, that's one of the words I have for you.
Go ahead, sir.
Sure. So where I was leaving off was with regard to the economic benefit to the county, mentioning that we estimate $1.8 million in new tax revenue will be generated by the facility in the first 10 years of operation. That includes machinery and tool stacks and increased real estate taxes resulting from removal of property from land use. $250,000 is estimated to be, to be earned in the first year of the operation of the facility. Additional workforce and economy goals satisfied by the project or supported by the project would include new engagement with permitting authorities to promote collaboration and communication with state agencies, the attraction of new, and the expansion of existing commercial enterprises in terms of ancillary services that support this type of development. And we've engaged a professor from University of Illinois associated with a group called Strategic Economic Research to conduct an assessment of the economic impact of the proposed solar facility. The net result is that when compared to continued agricultural use, there's a positive economic benefit to the county. We'd be happy to provide the results of that report to the Board for review. Getting to another standard and guideline pursuant to which conditional uses are evaluated, you know, the conditional use requested here does not pose any adverse effect to public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. I'd like to take this opportunity to address a number of valid concerns that were raised in the public feedback processes and explain how we have addressed or plan to address those moving forward. First of which is panel safety. The modules involved generate DC electricity. They're quiet. They emit no odors. They're safe to touch. They're primarily composed of glass, aluminum, copper, silicon, trace amounts of conducting materials like silver. We have no plans to use panels containing cadmium telluride or thin film panels. The panels are rated for large hail impacts and extreme weather conditions, including up to 140 mile an hour winds. They are, what we procure for this project will be compliant with the EPA's T-Clip program, which is the toxic character leaching procedure. That program categorizes the type of bifacial panels we intend to use here as non-hazardous. We obtained a toxicity report for bifacial phototag panels that we've used at other sites, and that report also concludes. Additional workforce and economy goals satisfied by the project or supported by the project would include new engagement with permitting authorities to promote collaboration and communication with state agencies. The attraction of new and the expansion of existing commercial enterprises in terms of ancillary services that support this type of development. And we've engaged a professor from University of Illinois associated with a group called Strategic Economic Research to conduct an assessment of the economic impact of the proposed solar facility. The net result is that when compared to continued agricultural use, there's a positive economic benefit to the county. We'd be happy to provide the results of that report to the board for review. Getting to another standard and guideline pursuant to which conditional uses are evaluated. You know, the conditional use requested here does not pose any adverse effect to public health, safety morals, and general welfare. I'd like to take this opportunity to address a number of valid concerns that were raised in the public feedback processes and explain how we have addressed or plan to address those moving forward. First of which is panel safety. The modules involved generate DC electricity. They're quiet. They emit no odors. They're safe to touch. They're primarily composed of glass, aluminum, copper, silicon, trace amounts of conductive materials like silver. We have no plans to use panels containing cadmium telluride or thin film panels. The panels are rated for large hail impacts and extreme weather conditions, including up to 140 mile an hour winds. They are what we procure for this project will be compliant with the EPA's T-Clip program, which is the toxic character leaching procedure. That program categorizes the type of bifacial panels we intend to use here as non-hazardous. We obtained a toxicity report for bifacial photovoltaic panels that we've used at other sites, and that report also concludes that panel concentrations of materials are below threshold for toxicity. Another way in which, you know, the the public health and safety and welfare is generally protected here is the decommissioning obligation that we have under both our leases and under the law of the Commonwealth of Virginia. You know, the Commonwealth law requires us to enter into a written decommissioning agreement to be negotiated with the county attorney. Local ordinance requires the same. To that effect, we provided a decommissioning report detailing the cost of removing all the facilities, restoring the land, decompacting road areas, and. And what we required under county ordinance to post financial security to cover the full cost of decommissioning the facility. And that way, it can be done at no cost to either the landowner, the county, or residents in the event the applicant fails to do so. Obviously, we fully intend to comply with the letter of that agreement and the provisions of our contract that require us to decommission and restore the land. Again, we provided in the materials you were given a decommissioning study, detailing the cost and scrap value of the facility as required by the ordinance. The costs are to be updated every five years, and the county can then adjust the security value based on the updated decommissioning cost information. Panel recycling, there have been concerns expressed about the. The ability to recycle photovoltaic panels. As the slide demonstrates, there are 13 recycling centers in the United States that accept PV panels. There are several more pending. Two sites are in the joining states, Kentucky and Tennessee. Another site in South Carolina. This information comes from the Solar Energy Industries Association, Industries Association. You know, while many panels that are in operation today have not met their the end of their lifespan. In fact, you know, generally their lifespan is anticipated to be 30 years. There are panels that were put into operation in the 1980s that are still performing at effective levels. So that reduces the number of panels that need to be recycled today. And it's evident that, you know, with with all the solar development ongoing in this region and in the nation as a whole, there will be a need for additional capacity as, you know, more panels approach the end of their life. You know, with regard to that lifespan, many manufacturers back their products with performance guarantees and warranties. Often, those models can be modules can be refurbished or reused and give it a second life in generating electricity at a different location. The inverters used on the project can be recycled like normal e-waste. There are myriad facilities available for that throughout the nation. You know, the the primary materials used in manufacturing solar panels are glass and aluminum, which are two of the most common and easily recycled materials that exist. The other materials like copper, silver, and semiconductor materials can be recovered and reused as well. And again, I would stress that this is a growing industry with development ongoing in the state. It's anticipated that facilities will likely spring up in the state of Virginia for this purpose. Another standard or guideline for assessing compliance and and approval of a conditional use is that the necessary safeguards be put in place to protect surrounding properties, persons, and neighborhood values. Again, this is a great opportunity for me to address a number of concerns that were raised in the public feedback process. One of which is environmental concerns. Today, we've conducted the studies outlined here in assessing the site, including the site characterization. That's both a desktop and field study. You know, assessing the occurrences of habitat suitable for species of concerns, identifying wetlands, and then precluding those areas from development. We've delineated all waters of the United States as part of a field wetland delineation. Those areas delineated include the Chesapeake Bay preservation areas, specifically RPAs. Again, the site is designed to avoid installation and construction of arrays on any of the identified waters and includes a minimum 100-foot setback from wetlands and RPAs to avoid any impacts during construction. We have a consultation scheduled with the Corps of Engineers on October 31st to confirm the accuracy of that delineation. Additionally, we will, we will, the project will comply with all relevant regulatory requirements of the Clean Water Act, including all permitting requirements of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Review of compliance will occur prior to approval of the final site plan and issuance of building permits. Another concern that's raised in relation to environmental impacts is the impacts of wildlife. Again, our site characterization work has identified species of concern within the project area. The only species of concern identified through that process is the northern long-eared bat, and there have been no observances of this species documented within 20 miles of the site. In furtherance of safeguarding non-protected wildlife from impacts, we're using mostly cleared agricultural land and minimizing tree clearing, which, as a result, reduces impacts to areas of natural habitat. Individual panel areas are separately fenced. That way, wildlife can still traverse the area. You know, wildlife and game species will also benefit from the revegetation of the site with native brasses and forests. In areas where we would remove trees, we would stump those trees, preventing regrowth. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, folks. To your turn now. Before I start, I would, I know some folks will leave after they probably speak. And like I said, we are sending it back to the planning commission. But I appreciate the turn. I really do. This is what government's about. And no matter what your opinion is. And before I start, I'll give to any audience, I was told I need to read the ones that called in and their response to this project, which all dealing with Sweet Sue, solar farm. And all these were in fact. Sarah Worsham, resident of West Point, due to the revenue and jobs it will bring to the county. Laura Hoffman, resident of West Point, disappalled. Linda Miller, resident of West Point. And if you hear, you can still come up and speak. Virginia Childers, resident of Manquah. Kim Langston, resident of District 2. Joan Nelson, resident of King William County, did not list a district. Stacy Minder, resident of District 2. And now again, I'll repeat individuals. You have one opportunity to come forward. You have three minutes as an individual. As you're speaking for a group, you can have up to five minutes. And we're going to have to call that pretty close to those times. And I open this public. And please state your name and your. Fault. And I could give them by the sign up list to start, but this is all I have. Okay. Leslie Lucy?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm having time over here, and I'll give a 30-second. Okay. Warning, that lady.
Yes, good evening, you've all. Leslie Lucy from the 4th District. I'm an adjoining landowner for this proposed project. Some of the concerns I had the first time I was able to listen to a presentation. So some of them have been addressed somewhat. The concerns on the environmental impact on the area, that they're getting a stormwater runoff during the construction. And after the construction, the massive areas that will be changed from pervious surfaces to impervious surfaces, which my understanding it pervious means water can soak into the land. Impervious means it hits a surface and deflects off. And they talked about the hazardous materials that may or may not enter the groundwater if a problem occurs, such as hurricane wind damage, lightning strikes. If some type of brush fire gets started, how, you know, what are the assets to get in and control that fire and make sure that it doesn't spread into the adjoining properties? And if the hurricane winds produce damage and produces a debris field, who is responsible for cleaning up that debris field? I don't think if it damages my home, my insurance doesn't do anything. I have to go in and pick it up myself. So what are the safeguards for that? And I didn't hear anything about this, but any possible electromagnetic radiation emitted from these inverters, transformers? Is there battery storage locations on the property? And what would be done with the other 600 acres on the property? It's a 1,200 acre tract with 500 and some in panel development. Is that safe for later upgrade? Or does that all get approved here in this first go around? And I'm also concerned about the property value. I've been a resident for 26 years, and I plan to stay, and I'm hoping I don't have a problem with this place. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
The next person on the list is Catherine Stanley. She'll have five minutes. She's representing the responsible solar King William County. And you're in the fourth.
Yes, I reside in the 4th District. I'm also, my father, Stephen Arbrave, senior, is an adjoining landowner to the Easterly side of the Chennault property. I will say that my comments have somewhat changed, given the circumstances of this evening, so I will try to be brief. Gentlemen, we're at a crossroads tonight, and lady. We're at a crossroads tonight between balancing growth and maintaining rural character for this county while providing the necessary safeguards to protect our citizens and lands for generations to come. The primary lease does state that it's a 40-year lease. Everyone in this room can agree that every landowner has the right to do what with what they want to with their property. And those rights should be protected. However, when decisions of others create an adverse impact on the community and individuals, we too have a right to demand that those concerns be taken into consideration and solutions be mitigated. I will say as the daughter of an adjoining landowner, that no one has visited us about soil and erosion concerns. Not received a visit from the county nor from Invenergy. I recognize that this county, as well as other rural counties across Virginia, are having to face these difficult decisions of planning on very short notice to develop stronger ordinances, accountability measures, and educating the public. But up until this point, gentlemen, the county has not done their due diligence in getting ready for large solar in this county. I'll remind you, in 2015, when the first Hollyfield project was brought about, 17 megawatts. And I'll remind you that that is on a reclaimed sand and gravel property, typically ideal for solar projects. With Sweet Sue, that's not the case. That's very fertile farmland, crop land that's been in productions for many, many, many years. So there is a difference between the two. But ladies and gentlemen, we failed this counting because between then, 2015, and now, we have not adequately taken the steps to strengthen and develop stronger zoning ordinances to adequately prepare for the growth and placement of utility scale solar in our county. And that's left us vulnerable to these large multimillion-dollar energy corporations such as Invenergy. It's interesting to me that we place a high demand on the standards of excellence in our schools and our workplace, yet the minimal standards are being applied here to this project. How can we expect a quality return on our investment when the bar is set so low from the beginning? Companies like Invenergy prey on small towns such as King William County because of our lack of inexperience and a lack of preparedness with the solar industry. This allows corporations like Invenergy to spend the least amount of dollars, all while maximizing their corporate profits, leaving the county and ultimately the taxpaying citizens to bear the speculative and unanswered burdens for the deficiencies and false promises. Some of you are aware and some of you are not. But this company has offered a neighborhood agreement to only some adjoining landowners. The attorneys that have seen this agreement refer to it as a hush agreement. That leaves quite an ugly distaste in someone's mouth to be offered a bribe to go along and get along. My father, Stephen Graves, is willing to provide a copy for you or the county attorney to look at. If they're willing to buy off landowners, the underlying question to be asked is who else is getting a deal? Gentlemen and ladies. We could be having a certainly different, more productive conversation tonight. But unfortunately, there are individuals and county staff that kept this secret close guarded, and citizens were not given enough time to prepare for this, and neither were you.
Thank you.
Please extend my voice. I have a terrible cold.
You're talking that like that.
I do live in the 5th District. Although I was raised in the 4th District, I have been very graciously given 40 acres in the 4th District that I plan to build a home on in the next year, right on Enfield Road. So this is very important to me. My name is Catherine Davenport Barlow, and my entire family has lived in King William County over the past 150 years, maybe more. I am very passionate about what happens in this county. First and foremost, I am not opposed to solar energy. What I am extremely opposed to is deciding on something as important as placing 250,000 solar panels next to other farmland, forests, and homes without having all the facts. There are still too many vague and unanswered questions about this project. Until further studies are done by the county, I, as well as my entire family, feel this project should be postponed. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person is Rick Ryan, a mechanic student.
Rick Ryan, the mechanic student. I guess I'm going to challenge the need for solar and wind energy, period. The mainstream media has done a very good job of trying to convince everybody in the world that CO2 is going to be innocent for 12 years. world that CO2 is going to be innocent 12 years. It's absolutely ridiculous. The, um, the, 550 million years ago, CO2 concentration in the atmosphere was about 6,000 parts per million, 0.6% of the atmosphere. It went like that for about 250,000, a million years. And suddenly it dropped in the geological cycle of a million years. And what happened with that was chlorophyll plants came into being finally, however they were created or evolved or whatever, and it brought the CO2 concentration down to about 400 parts per million, how it is today. So in that interval, before it started to drop at 6,000, 5,000, 6,000 parts per million, the atmosphere was still favorable enough and the earth wasn't hot as to impede or inhibit the development of plants. Of course, once plants developed mitochondria and handled its fall. The, the thing about CO2, and you, in one of the research people I look at, many of them, is Fred Singer, Dr. Fred Singer from VA, and William Happer, Dr. William Happer from Prince. And William Happer is a, is a PhD physicist, both of them are PhDs. Anyway, Happer's specialty was gas leaks, specifically CO2 gas leaks. Like he says, he knows a lot about CO2. All right. One of the things about CO2 is as far as emissions and source is concerned with CO2 in relation to temperature change is that it's a logarithmic relationship, logarithmic, meaning that at 400 parts per million, right now, the, the atmosphere, the greenhouse effect of CO2 is about saturated, it's about down. So if I double, what, three minutes?
Yeah, 30 seconds.
Athletics in Becklinburg County said projects that were ended. Main complaints were that lost property values, runoff, impact of the view shed, area wildlife, denigration, denigration of local roads, uh, the, uh...
All right, sir, Mr. Ryan might...
All right, basically, just to finish up, we're going to spend a lot of money on alternate energy, which is absolutely unnecessary. All this alternate energy also requires backup power because it's unreliable. So you haven't gotten rid of fossil fuels, have you? Fossil fuels?
The next person on the list is Amanda Forge, District 11.
I think she had to leave.
Okay. All right, the next one? I think it's correct, Clyde Wilcox. You just stated your district, sir, or you didn't?
District 5. And I am going to have to leave right afterwards because I have to drive to Washington DC today. So I'm lucky enough to have a good friend who actually runs a consulting company that consults with national, state, and local governments on solar projects. And it's sort of a pro-solar company, but sometimes they say this is not the right approach. And I'm lucky enough to have a wife who managed to get him to give us some general advice about what we should do in planning solar in this region. Normally, he charges a lot of money, but I share this through you for free. First thing I want you to understand is this region is going to be targeted massively for solar, right? That lots of companies are looking to come in here. I actually know for a fact that some landowners have been approached by companies wanting to buy their land for speculation, right? So this is, he says, the first of the main census projects. You want to get the first one right. The wrong way to approach this, he says, is to do it project by project. So we look at Sweet Sue, we say, this is the issue for Sweet Sue. Sunlake, a long time's the excellent. I'll call it Sweet Judy. There's some problems with that one. Then a long time's the next one, Sweet Laverne, we've got problems with that. We do it one at a time, but then the companies come in and they use the inconsistencies and the regulations against us that have invested a lot of money. He said that's the wrong one. What he would recommend is before we approve anything, to spend a couple of months, get a comprehensive list of every possible regulation you want, every remediation, every condition for any solar project, not just Sweet Sue or Sweet Laverne, any project anywhere in the county. And then he said, and especially to make sure you've got a written policy on bonds. He said 80% of the counties he's advised have set the bonds too low. So you want written policy of how you set the bond amount, and you want written policy that we're never going to forgive the bond early or reduce it. After you get the master list, he says, you should give it to the company that's making this proposal and ask them to revise and resubmit. And I think honestly, I read through this proposal, it's really sloppy, right? I mean, I'm a college professor, I see, this looks like a paper that someone started at midnight, right? So I honestly think that we should take our list of comprehensive suggestions and say, adjust it, respond to it, and rewrite it, so we can raise the standard of the kind of proposals we're going to get in the future. So first, like suggestion, comprehensive list, second suggestion, revise and resubmit the proposal, and finally, let the new board go on the line. Thank you.
State Travis, 5. The next person is Thomas Mundy, 5th District.
Thomas Mundy, I've lived in this county about 35 years, been a sportsman all my life, and I tell you, I hunted with the club that actually leases Mr. Flippo's land and hunted that land for 20 years. And there are other spots that are with that home club that have already been developed, like the kitty litter plant. There's a sandy gravel pit down near Mundy's ridge. All these were pieces of land that were either leased to them or adjacent to them. And Hollyfield, James Townsend's place now, you know? I tell you, if we don't start trying to calm this thing down, there's not going to be a tree left in the county for poor deer to hang out at. But I just, I know we need the taxes, I've heard many talking about the bosses, and you guys do a great job, the school system here. I raised four children in this county, and I tell you, I love this county. Although I wasn't born here, I feel, you know, on King William land. And I actually live in the fifth district. Well, my wife and I bought 12 acres at the very back corner of Mancom Farms that had never been developed. Spent about the last five years by hand clearing a driveway all the way back to that point, that ridge that overlooks this whole thing. So, you know, I'm going to have this in my face, but it's not about me and my wife. It's about the well-being of this county. And we really, if there was some bigger point to do, first one I'd give me, for being just a naive and just complacent citizen that I haven't, you know, really expressed my opinions to y'all that have seen land just, you know, wildlife just be destroyed for the good of everybody. This county, you know, is really an agricultural sportsman's paradise between two pristine rivers. Anyway, I just would like to reiterate what everybody said. I think they've all got good points. I kind of felt like this thing was being shoved down our throats and we weren't really having any say in, you know, the motto of King William is, under God, the people rule. And I felt like we were just being bulldozed and this thing shoved down our throats. And I appreciate y'all saying you're going to table it and research it some more, and that's about all I got to say.
The next person on the list is David Saul, 4th District.
I'm David Saul, my wife too, own the land in King William as part of the whole Sweet Sue solar project. My family owned the land and farm and baked apples on the land in King William County for only 80 years. My father started the farm with only 100 acres back in 1930, and to hard work, and the farm, it was only good 100 acres. Dedication, we have grown it to the size it is today. In fact, when I purchased the back field where most of the solar products will be located, only 11 acres were cleared back then. Farming is a wonderful way of life and has been good to our family for decades. But farming is also a difficult way of life and becomes more and more challenging each year. Low growing prices and the increasing high cost of fuel and equipment that made it difficult to turn a profit year in and out. Land is a farmer's greatest asset, and it's critical that farmers be permitted to safeguard our livelihood by using our land in ways that do not negatively impact the surrounding earth. The opportunity to use our land for this solar project provides our family with financial stability in uncertain, challenging times and helps preserve the land for decades to come. Early this year, we made the decision to lease a portion of the land into Invenergy for a solar project, and it was not a decision we made quickly alike that. We received lease offers from many solar companies, including some with higher leases and payments, and eventually chose to lease our land to Invenergy. Our decision was based on Invenergy's experience and track record in both developing solar projects and protecting, enacting the stewards of project land and the surrounding environment. Invenergy showed a willingness to work with us to put lease in place and protect our land and compensate us badly in the process. Just like other concerned citizens in the county, as a private landlord, I want to make sure my family's land and surrounding environment are protected and preserved for decades to come. Our family wants to make it clear to the board that developing the land for solar with all the necessary permits and approval in place will do just that. Tonight, our families ask the board to do what is already done for all farmers in our community.
All right, Mr. Rude? I'm sorry, the count...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think we get it. The next person is Jeff Martin from the fifth district.
One, I'd like to thank the board and everybody who came tonight because it's really nice to see democracy in action. And I'd like to applaud Mr. Hanson and Mr. Hodges, all of you for, for, really, even Mr. Anonymous here, for what you do here tonight, because I think we're all trying to, you know, come up with a good solution here. When I heard the Sweet Sue, the first thing I thought was, there's got to be something decadent and something immoral, you know what I mean? Sweet Sue? In all seriousness, damn ratings aside, my, my little girl, not too long ago, I was reading the Country Courier, you know, the article in there about the Sweet Sue project, and my little girl got up on my lap and she said, what's, what's this thing about this, you know, this solar panel thing? And I said, well, it's, it's about solar energy and solar panels. And she said, well, what's a solar panel? And I said, well, you know, I thought about it a minute, and I said, well, all of us have solar panels all around us all the time. When you go outside and play, you got solar panels. They're called leads, leads. If it weren't for solar panels, we wouldn't be alive right now, not this would, okay? Now finally, humans are starting to catch up a little bit. We're starting to realize the intelligence of, you know, if you're Darwinian, you can call it, you know, natural selection. If you're, if you're spiritual, you can call it God. But the bottom line is, nature, God, whatever, is pretty smart, and solar panels have been around a long time. I think within Invenergy, they actually say that solar panels rotate, I'm guessing, to be in line with the sun, you know? Anyway, that's a good thing. So I told my, you know, my little girl, this is a good thing, I'm all for it, I think it's time we got away from the dirtier fuels. I think we're all in favor. I love my Miata that burns gas, it's a nice car, but you know what? We need to get away from this stuff. And I'm proud of King William County, the planning commission, and the board supervisors. And I do feel for the people nearby. I think they're, you know, they've got concerns, it should be addressed. But I think in the long run, we need to go with this, it's a positive thing, and that's all I got.
Good evening, Mr. Hodges, gentlemen, Mr. Asenar. Wasn't planning on speaking tonight, you all already heard from me. While I'm on your planning commission, I'm speaking for private citizens tonight. A lot of good points brought up tonight. I'm looking forward to talking with my friend Clyde Wilcox to see how it's sloppy, how it needs to be improved. The gentleman from Mechanicsville is right in terms of, you know, solar panels, blah, 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 but that's not an issue for you all, that's an issue for the state and federal government, the issue in front of you gentlemen tonight. And going forward is this conditional use permit. The second issue is going to be the ordinance that allows it as a conditional use. The planning commission is already working on a draft ordinance that includes a number of solar farm things, requirements and so on and so on. This application, I believe, met all of those. We can go forward and we can take it out altogether and not use solar panels, we can not, you know, we can push back, let them be built in other locality, they get different tax money, not us.
John, speaking in the microphone.
Yes, I'm sorry. So, you know, the...
A small one.
The, the issue before you is the conditional use permit. You are allowed under the code to add reasonable conditions. If you think the planning commission has been unreasonable, you can undo some of those, you can add more as you see fit. But the, but it's before you as a conditional use, and so going forward, what we want to do with solar, that's a valid concern discussion. The draft ordinance, you may want to add to it, take it away, but, but the issue before you is this particular application and what additional conditions are reasonable and appropriate to protect the community as a whole, to the end of the citizens located close by you. Thank you.
The next person I have is Sybil Rose.
Good evening. My name's Sybil Rose, and I'm in District 2. Because I have a large farm in the county, I've been approached as well by many of the solar companies. I think solar is where we are going locally and as a nation in terms of renewable energy. I think that it's not just about solar, it's also about the project, the location and the company or entity that wants to do the solar. Some of the people that are getting into it because it seems to be a lot of money involved, I think I've been skeptic about some of them. My, I've gone to the community meetings that they've had here because I wanted to find more information about how Invernee intends to proceed with their project. And I've been impressed with how they've tried outreach with community, with facts and information. And I'm comfortable and trust that the process with DEQ as well as Army Corps of Engineers is in place to see that the applications and the engineering side of it are done correctly. I don't really see much of an adverse side at all of this. And I think I've heard some concern tonight that none of us are directly going to get the energy. But I also want to say that the corn out in the fields and the soybeans, I don't see any of us with those on our plates either. All that stuff gets shipped out and the income and the production, all of this to me is just energy. The corn, the soybeans, probably doesn't all gas is where it's mostly going anyway. But because I do forestry as well, I feel like that's another renewable resource. The little country of Costa Rica, ninety-eight percent of their energy is all renewable energy and they're the size of West Virginia. And I feel like if Costa Rica can do it, the United States of America needs to start catching up and looking how we are fueling our vehicles and our houses and how we're being responsible with their resources. So I'm in support of this.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. I wasn't thinking you were waiting. But at any rate, I just feel comfortable with this now and I hope that the board listens to maybe how to approach these because there's going to be more coming. I just think we need to address all the concerns, which seems like this company has done, so I've been impressed. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else on the list, but if there is anyone else who would like to come forward at this time.
My name is Megan Williams. I'm in the Second District and I just want to say when we consider the implications of the decisions made, we also have to consider the consequences of what would happen if we forbid this project. And if we forbid this project, what we're doing is we are telling the people of the county that we want more big government controlling how people use their own lands. And that sets a precedent for future events and future situations that could come back to bite people in ways that we may not perceive right now. So I really think that we need to make these decisions standing for limited government and standing for property rights for people to develop their land as they see fit. That's all I have to say.
Chairman Hodges, if I may, just add one thing real quickly and Travis could follow up on this. Some of you may not be aware that the Middle Coninsula Planning District is already working with Delegate Hodges at the state level in what they call pollution credits. And what that means is land that you have trees on, land that you have that's green, you will be able to, like New York, New York City did the same with Upstate New York. They bought land that's open with trees on it towards pollution credits. That is something that Delegate Hodges is working on and I believe Mr. Travis may even have some more information on it. But it's important to keep things green and that's something that you have to look forward to in the future of that land that you have those trees and that you have green on. Travis, did you want to add anything to it?
Mr. Chairman, this is the prosecutor closed.
Nurse, I...
I obviously don't want to hear his closing.
All right, seeing no one else come forward, I now close this.
Okay. What Mr. Hanson's referring to is, yeah, the potential Nutri Credit Bank, government government style Nutri Credit Bank that would ease the demands of stormwater management on some projects that have made it difficult to achieve economic development in the Commonwealth, particularly our area that's under debate. That really doesn't have any bearing here, but regionally, we are working on trying to understand the impacts of solar development, the future of solar development in our region, understanding that basically rural coastal Virginia is going to be a hot center of this type of development going forward. We have, you know, generally speaking, already cleared land, flat land exposed to the sun. We also have a pretty good electrical grid out in this area too that makes it easier for them to be able to tap in and then move that energy along down the grid. So we came together regionally and with the big projects that have already come through in a couple of localities, other localities outside of the region that have seen even bigger projects, we understand that we need to get a grasp on this and understand how we balance that coming development with our stated desire region wide to maintain rural land, protect farmland, protect forests. Obviously, the Commonwealth has decided that this is a need, that renewable energy is a need that the Commonwealth wants to make an investment in. And it's great that they want to do that and it's great that we have the prime space to get that done. However, having it done, as Mr. Wilcox said, on a hots prize nature, approving this, not approving this, putting conditions on another, that's not a good way to accomplish this goal. So what we need to do and what we're going to be working on regionally and then what we need to cascade off of that locally is crafting ordinances that properly cite these types of facilities where they make the most sense, where they have the least negative impact, produce the most positive impact, working with state level representatives on exactly how this benefits our rural localities. Obviously, at this point in time, the revenue generation from these is rather slim compared to other types of economic development that we could be engaging in. So that's what we're working on regionally and the VACO's working on this at the state level as well. I would like to see us here locally, and I know Mr. Breeden touched on this, that they're working on kind of a revision, a global revision of our zoning ordinances right now, but perhaps it would be wise to convene something like we did with solar, not solar, but cellphone towers, convene a work group, you know, cut from the Planning Commission, perhaps EDA, the Board of Supervisors and really look at this ordinance and work with our regional entities to get an understanding of what works best for us and then plan for the future accordingly. Because as Ms. Rose pointed out, there are landowners all over the county that are being approached about these types of projects and we need to be proactive and we need to be ready to make this work for everyone from the governmental side, the resident side, and from the developer side. If we get it right, I think it can work and it is certainly a need. You know, we've got to reduce emissions, we've got to increase our use of renewable energy because it's important for, the present is important for the future. So if we can play a role in that, then we need to, we need to try to be leaders and not followers. So that's my suggestion on this. You know, I'm glad the Planning Commission is getting another crack at it and I hope they consider some of the concerns that were brought up tonight as they review it, bring the adjacent landowners into this conversation and see if we can make it work. I would love to see it work for everyone. As it is currently proposed, obviously there are concerns that have not been addressed and there's more work to do on the planning side. So let's get that work done and see where we go from there. That's what I had to say on that. I do appreciate everybody coming out tonight to listen, to learn, to speak your mind. I hope everybody came in here with an open mind and came out here with more good information than they had coming in. So thank you all.
Y'all rule the state.
Yeah, I think it's a, because they've got, we've got to re-ear, we've got to do it all. I, 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 I'd make a motion to table.
All right, the next item we got is non-resurrection nineteen days sixty rolling forward.
Yeah, the board meeting. Monday night, South Town, that's on my, Robert.
Five minute recess.
Thank you.
Very short recess. You are meeting close.
Were you saying for South Town?
No, I used to be on board. I was on planning. I just, again, it's a NIMBY, it's not my background, that's all it is. Oh, I got a south. I support privacy. If you put a two-hundred-five-foot tower, Jason, you might, probably. When we always approved South Town, everybody, they always kept it at a hundred and ninety-nine. When you do two-hundred, you got these lights, you got these, all this stuff. But we have the problem with Broadband out here. Broadband, Broadband thinks here.
Five years ago, it was, it was, it was, it was.
Because Broadband's things that, everybody works better.
I'm going to be, 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 I'm[1545.15]
Mr. Chairman, we, I'll make a motion on this. Will you have discussed whether fire marshal is capitalized or not capitalized?
Yes, sir. I believe we discussed that in our last meeting and when it's being used as a title, we capitalize it.
Okay, that's all we've been asking.
Can I clock it night? I really don't. I'm gonna make a motion that we adopt Resolution 19-62. Second.
Mr. Hanson.
Aye.
Mr. Erhart.
Aye.
Mr. Moskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next resolution 19 day 62 calling skip hard seat to fire marshal position. The Italian chief.
Good evening. I am going to bring your approval, Resolution 19-62 adapting skip hard seat to the fire marshal position. He is currently, as I have stated before, acting as our assistant fire marshal. This position is not going to be a position that has a salary attached to it at this point. It will be volunteer. He is someone who has worked for our county in this volunteer position before. He also can fill the fire investigator position for us. The staff is recommending that the board adopt this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, we, I'll make a motion on this. Will you have discussed whether fire marshal is capitalized or not capitalized?
Yes, sir. I believe we discussed that in our last meeting and when it's being used as a title, we capitalize it.
Okay, that's all we've been asking.
Can I clock it night? I really don't. I'm gonna make a motion that we adopt Resolution 19-62. Second.
Mr. Hanson.
Aye.
Mr. Erhart.
Aye.
Mr. Moskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Next item is fire emergency services update. Still in the season.
I'm still here. Y'all received my most recent update, what's going on in fire department. Just a really quick preuse staffing. We have actually hired, as when this was written, we've hired two more ALS providers per town to help fill some of the voids. And we have received H O five applications for V O S.
For something else, I'd just like to make a comment that I've talked to several EMS people at several departments over the last couple of weeks because of our other endeavor and I found out that a lot of people think we should bring response times back and that's the only legitimate way that we can keep track of some of these things. I wanted to bring it to the board to see if they'd be complaining to do that. I know you said you didn't like it.
It wasn't that I didn't like to do that, we just need to decide how we want to do it. Because as a county, if we do a basic response time, that's not fair to our citizens because if you are not at, if you aren't close to where the firehouse is, the response time is going to differ greatly. So if we are going to do response times, I ask that we present them in a different way so that we don't mislead our citizens who are already 15 minutes away from the fire station thinking that we're gonna make it to you in seven and a half minutes. Because that can't happen.
I agree with that. If you come up with the plan, if you come up with that, those specifications and let everybody know what it is, I think the board and some public would really like to see that.
Absolutely, we can absolutely do that.
I think the worst point we dramatically did is.
West Point's a whole other animal because they're such a small area and they're right there on top. However, we do have to, West Point does have to respond into us at times.
Coming out.
Yep, and we sometimes go in, so.
Mr. Chairman, full-time positions, we have ten that have been approved, right? Do you cover certain correct?
No, sir. We only have six.
Six? Four part-time?
We have six.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, yes. We have quite a bit of part-timers. Part-timers all work in other departments full-time. So 10 days a month they're out and then they also can't be with us if they're scheduled to go in or come off shift from another department because you have no idea and you can be held over at your department. Some of our Caroline employees recently have been held over for mandatory callback. Handovers also had mandatory callback all last week. So that completely affects how our people fix scheduling. So although it seems like a large pool of people, they can only give X amount of time.
So six is, six is the full time of what we approve, what we work forward with the main recommendation and that sort of like. So we're filled with, and that recommendation, the fact that we have six people in place.
Yes, full time.
Yes, full time.
Six full-time which equates to two people a day. No, equipment's a whole other animal. This week has been a huge challenge with equipment. Thank, big thanks out again once to Walkerson for lending us their tanker engine. So we are down to, with the two engines that we started with, we are actually taking one out of service and trying to decide what to do with it right now. There's $24,000 that needs to be done just to pass inspection. That doesn't equate to anything else. So we need to start looking at what we need to do to replace or put another engine in place. So the apparatus plan that we're looking at is going to address that. Yes, question?
Have you only gotten one estimate on that one?
That is through A E S.
Okay.
And it's, as far as taking, getting other estimates, we are under contract with the A E S. They are doing everything in their power to work with us on things. That engine is almost 20 years old and never was under permanent maintenance.
Is there any way we could get a grant maybe for this fire engine?
Oh, that is something that we are, that is on the radar that we are looking for and just like we got the grant for the ambulance, it was a match grant, that is something that we are looking at.
I usually work on it, but would you repair those 24?
That is just to get it, that's not actually repairing the truck to get it up and running. That's, that's just to get it up and running and passing inspection. Beyond that, there are several other issues with the truck that need to be addressed. One of the big issues that we've had with our trucks is the pump issues. We've had several cracks in our plumbing. We just re, this past week our tanker went out because the plumbing cracked on that also. One of our big problems is fire apparatus cannot sit outside in the pole. So at any point when it is sitting outside in the pole and is not being run or idling in the appropriate way in our pumps, it will cause the waters freeze. We had some pretty rough winters over the past couple of years and that could have done some damage to us. Those trucks were not in our possession at that time, but unfortunately, we have some pump issues that came up and needed to be replaced.
So, because it was six and four, full-time, part-time, maybe, I was thinking, some reason I had a hand in my head, but nonetheless, I think, given the, given that this is an essential function and chasing for the life and well-being of the citizens, I think probably whoever is in here, probably we can look at the addition of additional full-time staff would be something looking ahead in terms of budgetary process, you know, along with, you know, pursuing new and updated apparatus.
Anything else?
You're open.
All right. Next thing is 10 day, what was your update on Park and Rec? Allison, why? That's the part of that.
I had a 40-minute presentation with you. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, okay.
Last 20 minutes are required.
So this is the quarterly report. As you remember, I came to you all the first of, beginning of July to do my first ever quarterly report for you all since I have been here. That covered the months of April, May, and June of 2019. So in this report, we are looking at July 1st through September the 30th. So you will notice that the numbers in the balance year-to-date at the very far right column are significantly different than the numbers you saw the last time because we were ending a fiscal year when I first reported and now we're kind of just getting started. So these are our program breakdowns, senior sports and leagues, senior community rec, youth sports and leagues, special events after school and summer, adult community rec, instructional classes, and then prior year revenue. So you can see the registrations, revenue and expenses in the last three months, and then where we currently are with the balance year-to-date. Underneath of that, the facilities for the park, we had four total reservations in the last three months, bringing in a revenue of $165. And then just some housekeeping things, park reports, the park operations are going as planned. There are no new completed projects to report to at this time. And then the Recreation Commission, we met in July and in September. We did not meet in, nope, and we met in October since I've done this report. So, so we've met for the last three. We did not meet in the month of August because of County Fest and we, as a commission, just decided that that would be our informal meeting of just coming to the event. Any questions on the quarterly report?
What's the status of the basketball?
So I was gonna get that, so that was after the quarterly report. So the basketball project, we have not broken ground yet. We have had two planning meetings. The meetings are, they consist of me, the manager of Parks and Rec, Frankie Reed, the manager of maintenance, and Julie Mills. I'm unaware of her actual title, but she works in the finance department, she does procurement. So we've sat down, we've talked at phases, we looked at the layout of the park and the proposed site that was across from the playground area. We had a triangular piece of property we would have been declared. That space is not viable to hold the size of the basketball court that we have and to make sure that we have the amount of parking that we would like for this court. Basically, to take exactly what we have and to move it into that space, there's just not enough room there. So we are actually going to be renovating the existing structure that we currently have. So phase one of that is getting rid of the trees that are there and the roots that are causing the issues to the asphalt bottom. We have been doing some research on different types of courts. So there is the standard asphalt court, there is an acrylic-based court that you can get done for these exterior uses. And then one option that we're looking at too is, there's many different names for it, but it's Duracourt. It's basically pallet-sized tiles that are linked together and it's for outdoor use and they're porous for water to be able to go through them so that they don't puddle and we don't have the issues that we have of the overtime damage of that basketball court being downhill. Obviously, we're gonna take some measures as well in this update to make sure that it's elevated properly, it drains properly, and that we don't have these issues moving forward. But right now, we do not have an end date for the project, but we are steadily planning and getting, we're doing research and trying to get our numbers together so that we can move forward with this project.
I think I've seen Duracourt like do something in a water festival, things like that where you can put them on the beach, you know, sand.
And they have many different functions. So Duracourt, you can do interior courts, you can do exterior, you can get them lined with multi uses, so you can have tennis court lines on it, you can have basketball court lines on it, pickleball courts, and you can do all these things. So they've got different levels of them, they've got some that are small enough to where you can rollerblader on them, they have some that are large enough that you can't. So it just depends if we're looking at pricing and looking at different options. I'm not saying that's where we're going, but we're making sure that the products that we're looking at and the supplies that we're gonna do this project are gonna withstand time so that way we don't have to keep dumping money into fixing it. Obviously, there's normal upkeep and wear and tear, but as far as like having longevity and a long lifespan of it, we wanna make sure we're getting the right product.
Yeah, lifecycle costs.
Right.
Look at maintenance present more of that type of thing.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
All right. I intend to be Resolution 19 day 60 for approving section 18 and 2 B dot G R B acceptance. All right. This request being made to the Board of Supervisors, King William County is to approve the addition of subdivision streets to the state secondary system of highways. This action is pursuant to the Code of Virginia Statute, Section 33.2-705, Continuance of Powers of County Authorities, Alternative Procedures. The roads listed have been identified to be added to the secondary system of state highways pursuant to the statutory provisions or provisions cited. In addition, is hereby requested the right-of-way for which including additional decent for cuts, fill, and drainage as required is hereby guaranteed. The segments include Pleasant Grove Court, Oak Ridge Court, Evergreen Glade Court, Cedar Crest Road, Pleasant Grove Court, Pine Haven Road, Whispering Pines Drive, Pine Ridge Road, Pleasant View Drive, Woodland Court, and Forest Court. The staff recommends approval of Resolution 19-63 and we included the B dot forms for your.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 19-63. Second. Olivia.
Mr. Erhart.
Aye.
Mr. Moskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Hanson.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Next item we have to do is the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Erhart.
Yes, sir. We had some discussion on property taxes and such tonight. Several years ago, my property was over-assessed as well, so this is not a new issue for having errors associated with property assessments. And I think, giving credit to Nathan, I think he might have been the first person that let me know about the vehicle tax issues. When that first surfaced, I called, asked if we could get this listed on the county website, which Olivia quickly did. I think, I wish we would be more reactive in this situation. I'm not sure if we sent letters out or anything regarding the 1999 order, the vehicles that have this calculation error in terms of how much you do. I have a 95 and normally I'm charged $30 for the tag. This year I was charged $74, which again, that's what prompted me to call, make that phone call, have it, have this put on to the website so the public could have this The only thing I would say in moving, looking ahead, we have a fundraiser on November 2nd for Brenda Vessels Taylor up at the D F W Post, 12 to 6. So if you don't know, she's a county employee dealing with some health issues and I would encourage everybody that is able to come out and support that effort in the community and if not, you can also make a donation to the family and enable GoFundMe account set up.
Just quickly, as obviously from the participation of the people of the Ford District, which should be no surprise to anyone in this room, if I am re-elected, I will vote no on swing two. Thank you.
Thank you everybody for coming. It's like a lot of people left. That was, I think, one of our biggest crowds, almost as like we had when we had the motocross or the reservoir or the school issues with West Point. Wish we had more participating in all of our meetings. And I wanted to bring up, we also allow public to come to our Planning Commission meetings with Ron and I wanted to mention something I didn't, like some people said in the audience that we don't have strict enough rules in our planning. And I suppose Mr. Greenwood's already gone and, oh, Mr. Wagner's still. I know there are two of our boardists still here and we, I hope we pride ourselves in making, as we came up with those 12 issues and there are already strict issues about motocross, that's why the audit board is was changed. There are only certain numbers that can go in the county, they have to be within a certain distance of a power station, so that sort of already limits the number that can come to county. I don't know how, like, so many people have been gone and sought after, unless they're maybe within another, certain distance of another power station, so that's another thing. They can't feed but one per power station, I think is correct, Mr. Ed or my shirt, but I think we have some pretty strict rules and I know that we all working on the board insists, I think there are lots of meetings with Planning Commission the next couple of weeks and I'd like to take it towards all what people said and hopefully we always can make changes. Everything needs to be changed, what the citizens of our county wish, so I just wanted to bring that up and, all right, I wish everybody good luck in the upcoming elections, that is next week, and good luck to everyone. We may have differences and we may have been nasty sometimes, but let's all try to keep it civil and make the best possible out. Thank you very much.
Never mask.
Never mask.
Thanks to our long-timers who waited out with us tonight and some new timers as well that I see that, man, longest meeting that I've held certainly in the last probably five years for sure. But again, I hope everybody that came in to listen on this issue tonight, listen with open ears. There was a lot of good information shared and a lot of legitimate concerns brought up by people who do have concerns about the project and so, you know, I hope we move forward that we can find, you know, something that works for everyone. But, so I commend that work to the Planning Commission, best of luck to you, and we'll see when we get, when it comes back. As Stephen pointed out, we do have election day coming up next week, so I'm sure everyone here has plans to vote, make sure your friends and family do as well. And we'll see everybody back here at the end of November, maybe I'll be walking by then, that'd be great, wouldn't it?
Not walking. No. I'm coming out, I really appreciate it and we're very important, but here we go. And at this point, I get it short, but we've been here a while. In accordance with Section 2.2, Day 37 and 11, Aids of Southern, the Code of Virginia, I move that the Board of Supervisors Committee in closed session to consult with legal counsel consultants and our staff on a matter of actual litigation which the county may be involved.
So.
What actual litigation are we discussing? Yeah, so that's it. It's a potential.
Potentially, I think that's right.
Okay, if it's probable litigation, we can go here. Not potential.
Not potential, this is the problem. This is what the word says, probable litigation.
Yeah, that's what the statute says.
Or we can just go into closed session of the same code section to receive advice from legal counsel. We can go into closed session and ask me whatever you want and I'll talk to you.
We'll take that.
We'll take that, okay.
Mr. Moskowski.
Do we have a proper second?
No.
Not yet.
Okay. Okay, I'll second it.
Mr. Moskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Hanson.
No.
Mr. Erhart.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Our votes being closer.
Is that nice? I know we don't like it. How do these work out? That's right. Every moment, guys, it's what this rhetoric is about.